And welcome to the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, number eight for 2021. We have all councillors on the committee in attendance this morning, and no apologies. Before we begin the meeting, I'd like to propose a procedural motion to move outside of standing orders, just to perform an acknowledgement of country this morning. So I'd like to take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. So in saying that, I would like to begin today by acknowledging the traditional custodians of the country throughout Australia and recognise their continuing connection to the land, waters and community. I pay my respect to their continuing culture and the contribution they make to the life of this city and this region. I honour the elders past, present and emerging, and I extend my welcome to the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people who are present today with us as they hold the memories, the traditions, the culture and the hopes of all Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples across the nation. I think it's really important that we do the acknowledgement of country, not just in this committee noting that we'll be discussing the Indigenous Accord, but in the review of the committees which will be undertaken in the next few weeks. I think it's important that we actually add that so that all of our committees are doing an acknowledgement of country as the introduction to our committee. So I just want to foreshadow those particular discussions. These are very important meetings. Where public civic leaders who are meeting making decisions, and I think that it's a really important step that we should take to live out the Indigenous Accord. And it's a small thing that we can do immediately and roll that out. So I'd like to move that we go back to standing orders, just a procedural motion to go back to normal standing orders. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. So on to item number one, which is the confirmation of the minutes of the Community Culture Arts and Sports Committee, number seven, from the fifth of August this year. And the recommendation there is that those minutes be confirmed. I'll move that. Do I have a second, eh? Thank you, councillor Kunsman. Any discussion or amendments to those minutes? No, thank you. I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Moving on to the officers' reports. Item number two on the agenda this morning, Indigenous Accord 2020 to 2025 Milestones Report. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Yes, thank you. Could we have the relevant council officer to the lectern? Good morning. Is your microphone on there?
Good morning.
Just your name and title, thank you.
Derek Kinsella, Indigenous Community Development Officer.
Thank you. May I?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Mr Kinsella. Thank you very much for this progress report. I'm delighted that we do get this every six months and it's great to see so much progress occur as well. Is it possible for us to get a spreadsheet? Because I think there's over a hundred items. How many items are in the Accord? Remember, there's over a hundred?
I don't remember off the top of my head. Yeah, but I can find out, yeah. I just can't remember off the top of my head. Yep.
It'd be great to have a spreadsheet to see how everything's tracking. I see we highlight some of the wings. It's great to see progress on item 1.4.1, which is the development of the War Memorial. And I note that you've had meetings with the state and federal governments and processes and protocols with the RSLs.
Yes, we have.
Are you able to give a bit more detail on the location of that memorial and the reasons why?
Well, initially had plans for our memorial to go into Queen's Park. We met with the RSL, Ipswich RSL, and they're looking at putting plinths along the front of the RSL park. So we sat down with them and they've agreed to say we'll include a plinth that will acknowledge Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander servicemen and women within that. So they're going to apply for funding and include that within that process. What we have met with the federal government on is a healing garden of some base in Queen's Park, but that process will happen a little bit later. So the initial step will be to work with the RSL and develop that plinth in the RSL park in Ipswich.
I think, Mr Kinsella, we had the meeting with the state government with Auntie Lorraine, I think.
Lorraine Hammond from RSL, yep.
And NIAA also came in and their advice to us was Indigenous veterans have fought so hard to make sure that their memorials are with other veterans.
Yes.
And so I'm delighted that I know it's a slight change to what we have in our Accord, but it does align with what Indigenous veterans would like to see. So I'm really grateful for the fact that our Accords are flexible enough to allow that.
And a lot of things have happened over a length of time. So those discussions did start a long time ago when that wasn't part of a general discussion. So it's good to see we can adapt to that.
Thank you. Mr Kinsella, action item 3.3.1, Developing Work Experience Trendy Shipping Internship Period for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Peoples. I note the milestone talking about the Indigenous Community Development Officer has met with the manager, people and culture discuss how to increase Indigenous employment opportunities in council. Several actions have been identified that will support council becoming a workplace of choice for Indigenous people. The implementation of these council practices is being considered. Are you able to elaborate on that anymore? And are there any roadblocks that we can support?
So one of the things at the moment is around making council a employment place of choice for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people, but also looking at how do we get young people within the system? Because there is a lot of young people coming through our education system, but there also is a lot of businesses putting in programs that are grabbing young people as they leave school. So what we want to look at is what can we put in place so that we are in that market? And so currently we're looking at, okay, how do we make council culturally safe for young people? So one of the things that people and culture have done is we've linked up to an EAP thing, which is a line that helps directly for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people to link with if they're having some issues within council. So that's one area that we're trying to do is current staff can do that, but also providing a space within the organisation that allows people to feel that this is a place where they want to work and they feel part of that. And so that's part of it. Recently, the National Indigenous Australian Agency has done some consultation. We were part of that process, which is around their funding model around employment. So in line with the funding for the job actives, which is currently going a review as well, they're looking at how can that work towards supporting services or organisations like us to apply for funding that may not sit within a job active, may not be part of what we already do, but support us to look at employing young people. Because what we're finding is that what we need is to figure out how do we get young people coming into the organisation and staying? You know, and we just got to be careful that we don't get into a model where we employ a lot of people and then they leave within a few months. You know, because that doesn't improve our reputation, but it also doesn't provide an opportunity for young people to think. So our aim is to be in that market where we can get people and say, this is where I want to work. You know, and it's not a far-reaching thing. People want to work where they live. And I think Aboriginal people are no different, and I think we can do that.
So are you happy with the progress of council in this particular area?
Yes.
Any areas of concern you'd like to highlight?
No, I think, I think when you sit down and you understand all of those, I think you start to realise what has happened over previous years. We have had an increase in Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander employees, but their numbers seem to fluctuate and they don't they don't keep continue to rise. They just, they either go up or down, they stay in that thing. So I think I'm happy to work with that process that we have in place.
And I guess lastly, item 3.4, which is supporting issues and improved cultural understanding, the importance of early years learning. The milestones, I'm just curious, it's great to see those two milestones there. But on the week we were at Harding's Paddock, and then obviously they got a Bush Tucker trial, would that be incorporated as part of as a milestone as well, do you think? Or is it a separate?
Which one?
So item 3.4, supporting issues that improve cultural understanding, the importance of early years learning. I note that two of the milestones are environment sustainability funding provided for the Goodness State School Bush Tucker Garden.
Yep.
As well as the environment sustainability funding provided for Lykheart State School Growing Goodness, growing for student wellbeing. Is the Bush Tucker trial in Harding's Paddock that council maintained, would that be considered one of the initiatives or is it more to do with schools?
No, I think that that's a great example of what we are doing as council. And I know there is plans for a Cup Murray pit to be made as part of that. And once that happens, I know Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people have been told about it and continue to look at. And a couple of our men's group are looking at utilizing Harding's Paddock because of those reasons. So definitely, I think it is something that we should be proud of. And I know the community will utilise it on completion. And I know, like, trees have been planted out there for a while now. So, yeah, definitely fully support that.
And thank you, Mr Kinsella. Thank you for your work.
And also, I'd just like to, now I've been down and review community centre for 18 months. Well, I'd just like to say it's great to be back in town. We're starting to engage with the community, but I'd just like to acknowledge the work that our community organisations have been doing, because they've been stop-start for a lot of them, but they have been working very hard on getting people vaccinated. So, you know, it's been a fantastic effort from Canbu, Ayui, but all our organisations who work with their clients, they have done a fantastic job. And a lot of our elders have really said, stepped up to the mark and said, look, let's get vaccinated and be that part for their families, you know, because a lot of elders were hesitant and have been. But our services have been working with them to say, look, if you can do it, your families are doing it. And we're starting to see some really good runs there. So, yeah, and like you said, it's been good working back here because you start to see that. When I was at Review, you missed that connection a lot, not because of anything, but you're down there. So, but it's been great.
Councillor Kunsman, did you have a question? Okay. Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So the recommendation there is that the Indigenous Accord Milestone Report, September 2021, be received and the contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second, eh? Thank you. Councillor Kunsman?
Chair, may I ask for a second recommendation in there as an amendment? Just, I'd love to get a spreadsheet of all the activities, not just the ones that have been given to us now. I think certainly there's over a hundred action items. And I think it's really important for us to get an understanding of how we're going. So.
So we'll add a recommendation B?
Yep. The council provide a spreadsheet to councils on, I guess, an update on all the activities in the Accord.
With reference to the specific items?
Well, the Accord has an action plan, so just.
I understand that. Against all of them?
Yes, I think we need to know how they're going. Not just the ones that we're kicking goals in, but things that we may need to give focus to. You need to put the microphone on. You need to put the microphone.
Through you, Chair, we're addressing the action plan as much as the Accord itself.
Well, that's part of the Accord. All activities in the Accord? In the Accord?
Are you happy with the wording?
Yeah, I am.
Yep, councillor Kunsman, you happy to accept that?
Thank you.
Great, so I'll open that up for any discussion. And just speaking to your additional recommendation there that we received that spreadsheet, I guess it's really good to have that open and honest dialogue to know where we are hitting the mark and where we aren't. But in my discussions with council officers and the community, you know, it was a big fear of this councils when adopting the Indigenous Accord that we weren't just a mouthpiece and that we were highly aspirational and not achieving on that. I think that we've seen over the past 12 months some really great milestones being achieved here. But noting probably the biggest one that isn't included, that runs through all of the outcomes that we wish to achieve. And that's communication and dialogue within the community. And I think that that really underpins all of the work that's doing. So, you know, just foreshadowing this report that will come back to us eventually, that highlights all of the things that we have been able to achieve in the Accord. I think it's really important to remember that we have such good relationship building people in our community within the organisation, doing the good work that needs to be done as well. So, and, you know, I'm not going to sit here and expect that we will actually deliver on everything in the Accord, but we're just to ensure that we're making every attempt to make sure that it's on track and that we're doing the right thing as a council as well. So I just wanted to speak to that point there. And foreshadowing the development of the People and Culture Strategy, the council has already undertaken a workshop on that about some of the conversations from today's committee. It might be worthwhile taking that to Ms Lovelane to really focus the strategy to say, we are committed. Are you working with council officers to ensure that we have an Indigenous employment strategy in place? One that is achievable and one that we can include and specifically call it out in our new People and Culture Strategy as well. So we might, we might make, as the Chair, I'll make contact with Ms Lovelane from People and Culture to ensure that our discussions today are heard and they continue to inform the development of that strategy. Any further discussions?
May I, Chair? Also commend the organisation, I guess, on action number 3.3.2, looking at how council can advocate when appropriate improved employment opportunities for Aboriginal Torres Strait Islander people within Ipswich businesses, and note that there have been a number of Black Coffee catch-ups with local businesses like John Holland and Inland Rail, Watpak and Rafbase Ambulance. It's great to see that happen.
Great, thank you. With no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. Moving on to item number three, Safer Seniors Programme. This is a report concerning the Safer Seniors Programme to be held in partnership with Able Australia and in consultation with the Queensland Police Service, Ipswich District Crime Prevention Unit, Queensland Health, Older Persons Mental Health Unit, Age Disability Advocates Australia, Queensland Fire and Emergency Services and Bendigo Bank. The programme consists of eight workshops targeted at our senior community to enhance a sense of empowerment by providing effective safety strategies. This aims to improve the quality of life for our seniors so they continue being active members in our community. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Councillor Johnick? Yep.
Good morning, Melissa Dower, Community Development Manager.
Thank you, Ms Dower. I'm just questioning, what's the age bracket for the Safer Seniors Programme? Is there like a cutoff to begin with? Like, does it start at like 65 or is there?
Not that I'm aware, but I don't think we would decline if someone identified as a senior. I'd be okay with that.
Yep, wonderful. I've just been to a few seniors' functions in the last couple of weeks and noting that they do need assistance and the screws in the number plate. So I was talking to our local sergeant in charge and they've been fantastic in reducing crime with stolen cars as well. So I think that this is a fantastic initiative and I think that our seniors can tend to sometimes get forgotten, noting that the 2016 statistics for our census, over 65s were 22.5% back in 2016. So it's a huge piece of our community that sometimes get forgotten, but are very, very appreciative for everything that they do get. So I just wanted to congratulate you guys on this initiative.
Some of the content within the programme I've got listed here is safe banking, home and property security, fraud, scam awareness, personal safety strategies, emergency and fire safety, mental health and seniors advocacy. And the community has actually come to us wanting to partner. So this is identified within our community development strategy about working with the community. And that's why I've brought this report to council, to share how we are collectively working towards a safer community.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you very much for this information. May I ask, Ms Dower, the eight community safety workshops that are happening, would that be listed on our on the internal events calendar for council so we'll be aware of when the workshops are on?
Yes, for sure.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I hope they're on there already, but if they're not, they will be.
Thanks, Ms Dower. The recommendation there is that the Safer Seniors Programme report be received and its contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second, eh? Thank you, councillor Johnick. Now I'll open that up for any discussion. I just wanted to, I guess we need to acknowledge that Able Australia is rolling this programme out and we're just partnering with them. So there's no financial implication here, but it's a great example of the implementation of our community development strategy, which is partnering with community and really highlighting the great work that already exists in our community to bring greater visibility to that. And what a great programme to do this for. With no further discussion, I will take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. Moving on to item number four, Get Ready Community Safety and Crime Prevention Expo. This is a report concerning the Get Ready Community Safety and Crime Prevention Expo to be held in partnership with Queensland Police Services on Sunday, the 17th of October this year as part of Get Ready Queensland Week. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Thanks, Ms Dower.
Good morning again, Melissa Dower, Community Development Manager.
Thank you, Ms Dower, for bringing this forward. I just, I guess I query about community and other consultation. As the Chair of the Local Disaster Management Group, I knew nothing of this. So I guess I'll just ask what the, what was the consultation process? I don't know, councillor Kunsman, if you were part of the LRRG. Do you mind just sending me any information that I should have as the LDMG?
Most definitely. And there is a report coming up in regards to the Get Ready, Get Ready Week. So I believe throughout that consultation period, it may have been around Get Ready. And my apologies, I've just put this project within the.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms Dower. Thank you. So the recommendation here is that the Get Ready Community Safety and Crime Prevention Expo report be received and its contents noted. I'll move that. Do I have a second, eh? Thank you, councillor Johnick.
I guess I'd just say that as the Chair of the LDMG, I wasn't consulted on this, supportive of it, but I just want to make sure that our records are accurate.
No worries. Did you, you're happy with Ms Dower's response to get that information to you? Yep, great. Thank you. No further discussion. I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous and carried. Item number five is Major Event Sponsorship 2021 Countdown with Colour New Year's Eve Event. This report is concerning the major event sponsorship application by Tivoli Social Enterprises for $25,000 in financial support for the 2021 Countdown with Colour New Year's Eve Event to be held Friday, the 31st of December this year. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer? Councillor Kunsman? Yep. Thanks, Ms Gregory.
Good morning, Carly Gregory, Manager of Marketing and Promotions.
Just your microphone, councillor Kunsman. Thank you.
I understand Tivoli Social Enterprises is a trusted events organiser. I just wondered if there are any other applications for New Year's Eve for funding so far?
We are currently in talks with some other venues in the city who would like to present something on New Year's Eve. We wouldn't be promoting something in competition with this, though, if it was for a different target audience, for example. This is very family friendly. So this would be the main city celebration for New Year's Eve. But no, we haven't had any applications for funding.
But not the only potential applicant for money, for funds?
Look, the funding applications obviously have rounds and close at certain times. So at this stage, no, we have had no application.
That was just my question.
No further questions. Thanks, Ms Gregory. So the recommendation here is that council endorse the $25,000 excluding GST and major event sponsorship for financial support to Tivoli Social Enterprises for the 2021 Countdown with Colour New Year's Eve Event. I'll move that. Do I have a second up for that? Thank you, Mayor. And I'll open that up for any discussion.
If I may, Chair, it's wonderful to see these events coming through. And certainly Tivoli Social Enterprises are well known for running really well-run COVID-safe events. So delighted to support this event.
Great, thank you. So with no further discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? And that's unanimous. So item number six is Community Christmas Carols 21. The committee will remember that we previously resolved to support a series of community carol events via the major community event sponsorship. There's a detailed timeline there of the resolution of the Brussels Christmas Carols and its support, likewise with Red Bank Plains. So this report aims to clear up and get ready for this year's Christmas. And there is an ask for further funding here within the recommendations. Before we go into those, would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officer with regards to these? No, so I'll go through these recommendations, A through D. So the first one is, and I think it's important to read them out just to understand what we have previously resolved and what the ask is moving forward. So just bear with me here. So recommendation A is that council, that the previous council decision as per recommendation A of item number two of the Economic Development Committee, number eight of 2019, and adopted by the Council Ordinary Meeting, the 20th of August 2019, titled Community Christmas Carols Partnership Agreements be amended by including an additional $3,605.80 in kind support for the 2021 Carols Event for Brussels Christmas in the Park. Recommendation B, that the previous decision of council as per recommendation B of item two of the Economic Development Committee, number eight, 2019, and adopted by at Council Ordinary Meeting of the 20th of August 2019, titled Community Christmas Carols Partnership Agreements be amended by including an additional $6,046.95 in in-kind support for the 2021 Carols Event for the Carols at Rebel Domain. Recommendation C, that the previous decision of council as per recommendation A of item nine of the General Purposes Committee, number two of 2020, of the 23rd of June 2020, titled Major Community Event Sponsorship be amended by including an additional $6,128.07 in kind support for the 2021 Carols Event for Red Bank Plains Community Christmas Carols. And D, that council note that the value of the in-kind support may increase slightly as some costs are expected to increase in the 2021 and 2022 financial year. I'm happy to move those together, A through D. Do I have a second, eh? Mayor, before I?
If I just point out, I'd like to suggest that since we are exercising a delegation and trying to be as upfront and transparent as possible in that body, that we actually have, just say for each of them, include the fact that the $15,000. So it might be for the first one, you know, $3,605.80 in kind. You know, bringing the total to, you know, $18,600 is what I would, I'd certainly like to see. I think it's, rather than having to read through the paper, I'm just trying to make it as upfront as possible. So, yeah.
Yep, I hear that point. And I think that we can work closely with Ms Gregory and have that updated so that the minutes correctly reflect that. And.
Or we could just do that with the, each of those three, A, B and C recommendations. You just sort of add to it. So for the first, for A, you could have, it says additional $3,605.80 in kind. Support for the 2020 Christmas, for the Brussels Christmas, bringing the total to $18,605.80. Am I able to do that, Chair?
Yeah, happy for you to go through that and make these amendments now.
Thank you. To $18,605.80. For B, that sentence will end being the total to twenty-one thousand and forty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. And for C, being the total to twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seven cents. Twenty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seven cents. Just take, there's two dollar signs on that one. Thank you. Thank you, Chair, for that.
Yeah, I'm happy to accept that. And I'll take it you second, A through D, noting the amendments. Any discussion around this? Great. Thank you. Well, I'll take that to the vote. That's all in order. We will check your maths later, Mayor. So we'll take that to the vote. All those in favour of accepting those recommendations? And that's unanimous. Moving on to our last item this morning. We have item number seven entitled One Nicola Street Fees and Charges for Community and Commercial Use. Would anyone like to speak to the relevant council officers with regards to this? Councillor Kunsman? Thank you, Mr Stewart. This is a report proposing the new fees and charges be applied to the publicly bookable meeting and event spaces within the One Nicola Street building, a brand-new building. Thank you, Mr Stewart.
Morning, Mayor and councillors. Don Stewart, Manager, Community and Cultural Services.
Good morning. My question is related to publicising these spaces as being available and the costs associated with it. And a further question as to the uptake from community groups so far.
Yep. With regards to publicising these available spaces and their applicable rates, they do go on the website, the City Council website, as a bookable space. However, it would probably be prudent that we look at our databases and look to promote the fact that we do have these new facilities available and have a specific e-mail out go out to the majority of those groups. In terms of uptake by community groups at this stage, it has been minimal, given it's not publicly made aware that those facilities are available. We have had activation of that level by a select few such as our Mums and Bubs yoga groups, a couple of our library, Friends of the Library user groups and some organised groups via council.
Just in that correspondence, less of a question, more of a request. It is mentioned in the report that discount of fees and waivers can be applied for. Just if we could include that in the correspondence to our community groups that we think that might apply to as well. So that their initial introduction to the building isn't, here's the price, it's kind of, well, here's the price, but we also have fees and waivers to capture those community groups as well. Thanks.
And just understanding that it's easy to book, is it?
Yes, it will be.
And it's easy to request a waiver?
Yes, it is. What, we have been working in the background with our event management diary system that will enable the external parties. We're going to trial it internally first, but our external community groups will be able to access via an online portal to request, A, the room that they wish to use, the times required, and it will also publish the applicable fees. And then there'll be a box where you'll be able to mark that you'll be seeking a appropriate fee waiver or discount and that will then be processed accordingly.
Have we made any allowances for those groups that might want to make a permanent booking, say, once a month on a Saturday afternoon?
A recent adjustment to the guidelines for the fees and charges, it was recommended that up to four uses per year would be free, would be complimentary to those community groups as long as they met the established criteria. I guess in many respects, in terms of a regular monthly, you know, monthly use, it becomes problematic in that it is almost best, first-in, best-dressed, given we do expect a rather high demand for the facility, given it's not published yet, but we are already taking people through, through word of mouth who've come into the building, see Level One and are now wanting to book that space.
Yeah.
It's a bookable space, so it can be done. It's first-in, best-dressed, I guess is the best way to look at it.
Yep, thank you.
Hi, Mr Stewart. Thank you very much for this. How do we balance not competing with local industry, noting we also want to support local community groups? How do you do that? I mean, how are these figures benchmarked to be compared with?
Every year at budget time, I am asked to do a market scan. We then look at both the immediate local area. So we are looking at places like the Turf Club, Brookwater, for example, CSI and any other space that may have significant meeting facilities. But we also go beyond that to other council areas, just to make sure that we're not positioning ourselves above a similar space that they may have within their portfolio. So those prices remain competitive, not set specifically below that competition mark. There is a lot of, believe it or not, science that goes into establishing that price point, given rooms, meeting rooms are a competitive space. Natural light, audiovisual, newness of the facility all come into play. So we do try to ensure that we're not taking business away or targeting it to do that, more to the point. Yep.
Thank you, Mr Stewart.
Thanks, councillor Madison? Okay, thanks, Mr Stewart.
Point of order there, Chair, if I may. Prior to Mayor Harding talking about competition, I hadn't thought about the meeting rooms available at the Trades Hall. So I'd like to declare a conflict if that's, that's fine.
In accordance with?
Section, so just declarable, section one hundred and fifty EQ. So in accordance with section one hundred and fifty EQ of the Local Government Act two thousand and nine, I, councillor Jacob Madison, informed the meeting that I have declarable conflict of interest in item...
Where number seven?
Seven?
Where number seven?
Seven, One Nicola Street Fees and Charges for Community and... Sorry, wrong page. Commercial Use. The nature of the declarable conflict of interest is, I'm in the executive of the Ipswich Trades Hall and Labour Day Committee. We operate the Trades Hall, which is a few doors down. I guess the thing would be that we have some meeting rooms there. We haven't really been advertising them, so I haven't really been thinking about it. But I think it's worthwhile pointing that out this morning. I invite the other councillors to determine if I can continue to participate in the decision process. Happy to answer any questions.
I'd just like to clarify with the CEO, this deciding fees and charges, would this be in relation to overall budget determinations from this council? So there wouldn't really be a conflict of interest, but thank you for being prudent.
If I may, I thought it was better to raise it. I'm kind of sitting on the fence with it, to be honest. Because, yeah, but happy for the committee to decide. What was that, Mayor?
Yeah, sorry, defer to you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. In relation to the provisions of the Local Government Act and Regulation, when it comes to declarable conflicts of interest versus prescribed, there are provisions there that indicate that when it's matters that are relevant to the setting of the budget and matters such as fees and charges that provided your fellow committee members are satisfied, you are able to participate in the decision-making on the matter.
Awesome. So with that, I move that councillor Jacob Madison participates and votes on item number seven entitled One Nicola Street Fees and Charges for Community and Commercial Use because of the reasons outlined by the acting CEO this morning with regards to this being an overall budget decision on fees and charges. So I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour?
Councillor?
Sorry, seconded by councillor Kunsman. Is there any discussion on this? I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous.
I didn't mean to vote.
That's okay. Councillor Madison will abstain.
Didn't vote.
No vote. Is there any further discussion with regards to this, Mayor?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I look at the, seeing this paper, I've asked internally for the guideline in this in regards to the public and certainly as councillors have no visibility of the waivers, which obviously are support, but I think know the history of this council and the favouritism shown to some community groups and supporting groups and not others. I think it's really important that we do have that visibility and transparency of, you know, what organisations are getting the waivers and things like that. So may I suggest a second recommendation? I know this is asking to approve it. The internal guideline is the fees and, so I guess I'm asking for a second resolution. The council's fees and charges guideline on waiving guidelines and then it's a colon, waiving, discounting, withdrawing, quoting, so withdrawing, comma, quoting and discretionary application of fees and charges. Discounting, withdrawing, comma, quoting and discretionary application of fees and charges? I'll just correct it there. So the colon that's after waiving should be after guideline. If you could remove the word on, the word on is not there. Yep, colon. And there's a comma after waiving. I've got the one here dated October two thousand and nineteen, but it still references chief operating officers when it comes to delegation. Sorry, I'll finish this recommendation, that council fees, that particular guideline is reviewed and updated in consultation with the council. Sorry, with the councillors. Sorry, I'll just reword that. Sorry, Vicky. So after charges, please delete, and that this particular guideline that council charges is reviewed in line is reviewed in consultation with the councillors? And I guess, Chair, when I see that policy, when it says delegations, it states, and I quote, where none are in place is recommended that specific delegations be adopted by each respective department to identify which positions have the authority and make the decisions regarding revenue management, including discretion and the application of fees and charges. There's a lot of things that I think would be good for us just to bed down in good governance and do that in an open, transparent way. So I beg your indulgence, Chair, that we can add that as a second recommendation for this particular report.
Yep, so we haven't moved anything yet. So absolutely feel free to propose an additional recommendation there on top of the first. That council's fees and charges guideline waiving, discounting, withdrawing, quoting, discretionary application of fees and charges is reviewed in consultation. But by way of a paper to the Governance and Transparency Committee or what would the best way to do? The intention of your recommendation, Mayor, is to have visibility over those groups who have had their fees waived?
A workshop? Yeah, that way we can at least have a discussion. I see the CEO wants to probably say something here.
Thank you, Chair and Committee. I am absolutely, while in my usual role with council and as acting CEO, fully committed to openness and transparency and good governance and good use of ratepayers' money. I'm just contemplating that this is a council's policy and procedure framework that was adopted during the period of interim administration that does see matters such as procedures and guidelines within, as operational and within the remit of the CEO and the general managers and the ELT with delegations there. I wonder if, I note your points about the guideline and that it certainly needs updating and reviewing. And I agree that greater clarity of the delegations would be important. I wonder whether you would consider entrusting me as the acting CEO to take that on and perhaps to then provide an update to this committee on the action taken. And if you're not satisfied at that point, perhaps consider other.
Through the Chair, noting our framework for our policies, I deliberately didn't put approved, to be approved by councils, just for us to be consulted. But I have great confidence in you, so I'm very happy to withdraw that subsequent motion on the proviso that, you know, that you will come back to us with what the update is. And a way for us to be transparent and open as to which community groups are getting the fees and getting the waivers and things like that.
Thank you, Mayor. Through the Chair.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so I will move that council adopt the proposed charges for community and commercial hire of select meeting rooms and event spaces at One Nicola Street as detailed in attachment one. Do I have a second before that? Thank you councillor Kunsman. I'll open that up for any discussion. There being no discussion, I'll take that to the vote. All those in favour? That's unanimous and carried. With no notice of motion or matters arising, I now like to call the meeting closed at eleven thirty-five AM.